We can have regular minutes from June 15, 2011. We have public hearing schedules for El Tropicao on the liquor license at two Georges Road. We had another one for taxi license that's being held. We have ordinances on second reading, ODA 061101. An ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory order to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Traffic for Executing Vehicle in Traffic, Chapter 10.12 Traffic Control Regulation, Section 10.12.020, One Way Streets, Bergen Court, Jennings Court. Chapter 10 dot 16 Stopping, Standing or Parking, Section 10 dot 16 dot 020, Parking prohibited on certain streets, no parking west side of Bergen Court and Jennings Court. ODA 061102, an ordinance to approve a long-term exemption of financial agreement from the city of New Brunswick and New Street Departments, I understand this is being held?
Yeah, Mr. Patterson and I talked this afternoon and some numbers that have to be taken another look at so we can ask them if they know what they're doing.
Okay. Does it have to be re-adapted or whatever?
Not as long as we got the hearing and then move to the day.
And we'll still do the resignation do that?
Voice.
Voice, twenty. Can we do that now?
Where did you go with the ones?
Ordnances for our first reading, ODA 071101, an ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory ordinance in the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 12 dot 04 Sidewalk Construction Repair and Maintenance. ODA 071102, an ordinance to vacate Young Street, portion of Church Street in the city of New Brunswick. We have resolutions, R dash 071101, approved agenda amendments. 02, approved payroll from June 11th to June 24th. 03, approved restaurant license applications. 04, authorized refund for McGee tax sale certificates. 05, advising consent to marital appointments if department heads affected July 1st. None pro Tom Anthony A. Caputo, Director of Police, Dave Levens, Director of Social Services. 06, approve a word of contract with WPCS International for radio maintenance for the fire department not to exceed $13,136. 07, authorize shared services agreement in Brunswick Board of Education, reimbursement for operation of the school-wide after-school programs, 2011, amount is $1.1 million. 08, authorize shared services agreement again with Board of Education for reimbursement for operation and maintenance for use of city parks, garbage and trash removal for 2011 and garbage and trash removal, amount is $1,008,000. 09, approve renewal of liquor license. 10, approve disapprove application for renewal, 2011, 2012 liquor license with or without conditions for El Tropicao, is at two Georges Road. 11, approve resolution for Bethel Church of God in Christ, congratulations on the 90th anniversary. 12, approve amendment, resolution R dash 060955, to accept extend the contract for 18 months, this is for the UEZ clean team. 13, authorize execution of certification for right-of-way College Avenue bus shelter. 14, approve a word of contract, HVAC supply waterworks, for cold water meters, meter transceiver units and accessories for water department, not to exceed $126,235. 15, approve a word of grants for rehabilitation home improvements for Lorraine Thompson, 82 Tunis Road, not to exceed $23,650. 16, approve a word of grants for rehabilitation home improvements for Von Gosea Dory, 251 George Kilmer Avenue, not to exceed $35,435. 17, approve request for use of city property sidewalk only, requested by the Union of Rutgers Administrators, AFT, corner of Hamilton and College, for student labor solidarity rally Thursday, July 14, 11 a.m. to 2:45 p.m.
Mr. Racine, this resolution was written without an insurance requirement, which is typical for us, so we're going to advise the applicant that we expect to collect a certificate of insurance from them before they start the event.
We'll retake that if that's what the council wants.
It should be in there.
We're requesting one of the highest foundation in the next resolution, they're simply handing out leaflets, so I think we should.
Yes.
And unfortunately, that also pertains to Resolution 25.
18, approve request for use of War Memorial Park, requested by the highest of AIDS Foundation for National Testing Day, Friday, July 8, 11 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. 19, approve amendment of resolution R D S zero one 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 five two, an additional $8,000 to perform GIS street centerline update with GEO decisions of Division of Gannon Fleming for tax map maintenance and GIS maintenance services in 2011, from $40,000 to $48,000. 20, approve a word of contract with Hatch McDonald, miscellaneous and supplemental engineering services not to exceed $47,500. 21, approve change order number seven, the George Street beautification phase two for Black Rock Enterprises, not to exceed $10,591.01, increases under 20 percent of the original contract. 22, approve change order number two with Top Line Construction Corporation for commercial avenue road improvement from $475,540.70 to $478,115.99, the increase is under 20 percent of the original contract. 23, approve request for street closing, crane permanent relaxation of noise ordinance requested by Verizon for conduit placement Patterson Street and Kirkpatrick Street, 7 p.m. to 6 a.m., July 7th, 8th, alternate dates would be July 11th to July, end of July 15th.
Mr. Councilor, because I believe we had a request in incorporating that resolution also from Cape Division.
It's going to be part of this or the Cape Division?
The same one.
Yeah, both, Verizon came in originally for this relaxation of noise ordinance and then subsequently Cape Division came in and wanted to be back on the same timeframe, so they would be working in the same area using similar equipment, so it would all be done at the same time and that way it's done.
The resolution covers both the Cape Division and the New Brunswick.
24, approve rejection, approve or reject of proposals, engineering services for city hall boiler replacement rooftop air conditioning units replacement.
Three proposals came in ranging from 19,000 to over 100,000, we weren't comfortable that everyone understood what we were expecting, which is some mechanical and engineering services to replace all the HVAC in this building.
So we're going to go back out to the?
Yes.
Okay. 25, approve request for street closing, requested by Rutgers University Student Life for the involvement fair, college avenue between Bartlett and Senior Streets, Tuesday, August 20th, the time is, I believe, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m., not what it says here, but the resolution says 11 a.m. You're from the group, go ahead.
The date is Tuesday, August 30th.
August 30th?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hampton's there?
The resolution's coming.
Okay, so it's wrong on your, the time is, is it 11 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The resolution is correct.
Okay, so the resolution is correct and it's wrong on our agenda. Thanks. 26, it's being pulled at the request of the applicant for street closing. 27, is approved request in New Brunswick Public Sculpture. 28.
Mr. Racine, I'm sorry, I did a good job with the backup in the packet, the New Brunswick Public Sculpture Group has asked for permission to place their first sculpture, which is going to be a life-size version of Colonel John Nielsen reading the Declaration of Independence. That's the first sculpture they're working on, fundraising towards that effort right now, but they've asked permission to place that sculpture inside of Monument Square. I think the original location of the reading of the Declaration of Independence is down by the Hyatt, and I don't think the Hyatt was interested in that being in their front lawn, so the Public Sculpture Group approached us and asked to place it inside of Monument Square, which I looked at and I would recommend, and I think the mayor's on, I know the mayor recommends that as well, so you had in your packet a map of Monument Square and some information on the Public Sculpture Group, but this would be the rendering.
Where is the park, if you're standing on?
We are, we're proposing to place it in the lawn between the monument and Crossroads Theater. I think it might get the best visibility there.
Resolution says that the actual location is subject to agreement between Mr. Patterson and Greg Reed.
28, approve renewal of agreement with Edna Healthcare Traditional and POS 2 contract for health insurance for city employees, determined July 1st, 2011 to June 1st, 2012. 29, approve renewal of agreement with Cigna Healthcare General Health Plan, July 1st, 2011 to June 30th, 2012. 30, approve budget insertion, Chapter 159 State of New Jersey for the New Jersey Alcohol Education Rehab Enforcement, amount is $2,157.39. 31, approve budget insertion, Chapter 159 State of New Jersey for UEZ Shuttle Service Grant, amount is $245,053. 32, approve budget insertion, Chapter 159 State of New Jersey, the UEZ Clean Team Grant, 33, approve budget insertion, Chapter 159, National Highway Traffic Safety Clicket or Ticket, amount is $4,000. 34, approve budget insertion, 159 New Brunswick City Market, Clean Team Grant, amount is 35, authorize joint application, execution and acceptance of grant for 2011 with four other Middlesex County municipalities, New Jersey Department of Justice for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. 36, authorize tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax waters or accounts. 37, authorize refund for McGee tax sale certificate, 54 Delance Street, and that's it on the resolution. We have some items for discussion. The first one is the PMC refund policy.
Brought to my attention by Mr. Greg Riada and Mr. Mahoney, it seems that from time to time we get applications for a permit of one kind or another, and after the process has begun, the requests are, withdraws the requests, and sometimes they ask then to get a refund. It's been the policy, as I understand it, not to give refunds, the works are even done by the city employees and so forth, and the stamp is suggesting that that be continued. If there's to be either that policy or different policy, probably one would be written up, because they typically are, one of the permits, typical permits is a $40 permit, one of them is 75, and the most is 125, which is quite bad.
That's correct. But that's current, the current policy is no refund.
Sometimes it goes all the way to the pedics, if they say, no, and Mr. Patterson, he said, no, I think unless you want to put a cap on the refund, that's probably the business that way to do it.
Unless the money's worth the office is, in order for people to get their money back, they would have to build rooms in pedics or offices, or whatever.
So it's something you can write up in the conference next week?
Policy.
Yeah, with a policy.
And continue what we're doing now.
Yeah. The second one is the solid waste collection amendment.
I thought a copy of the pre-conferencing ordinance was sent over to you, but apparently it was not, and we went out long ago to talk about it. We all know, because Mr. Egan was very principled about it, what happened at the end of the school year, the voted garbage item on the street, and our people were absolutely overbending what was there. There was a meeting at this table with Mr. Egan, Mr. Patterson, Mr. Patterson, I think he said, Mr. Rettig was there, I was there, and they had to pick me around a whole lot of ideas, and a suggestion that came up was, it would be a one-month moratorium from, I believe, May 10th to June 10th, during which time there would be no bulk pickup in the city. People would have the whole of their material, some of the influential moratorium board, engage a private hauler to take the blame. The city would, however, bring the moratorium on Saturday mornings, provide garbage trucks at the public quarters garage, and so that people could bring their, whatever they want, sulfur or what have you. We would put penalties in for people who put out bulk items during the moratorium period, you charge them to pick it up because we're not going to let them sit on the street, and the only issue was open in our two act of whether or not we could impose a lien for that pickup or something in the bank. There's not a lot of good ways to proceed with this, and I hope that people were happy about the idea of the moratorium, it was a whole lot better than what we got now, and we would send a message and we would keep our streets clean.
We have torn that moratorium, can a resident call in for a bulk pick for a, say, refrigerator or something like that, apparently, without putting it in, unless they have permission?
That's considered a white good, if they could do that.
But a couch, or even if they call?
Well, we're finding that people in the fifth and sixth ward are calling and still filling the block with, you know, with stuff.
But if they call just for a couch? Or are they?
I don't know, maybe we should reconsider that, but the idea was to try and gain some control over what has now become an uncontrollable situation.
And the theory is that that request situation during that time period doesn't work.
Right. Sure it doesn't work where there's rentals with students, let me have a way to.
Right.
But at another park, if you want to do that, and you call with, you tell, in that moratorium, they'll be able to call, and if it's a white good or a one item, they'll be able to still pick it up. What we're trying to do is alleviate the problem of people thinking that they can take their entire contents of their house on a regular garbage pickup day and put it out on the curb and expect our people to pick it up and continue to work with garbage. This is something that's gone on for years, and it's just something that needs to be addressed, they have, just because it's garbage day, they throw out the entire, I don't know, this shouldn't be going on, and I don't know why any other town would let you do something like this, but we're not going to do it no more because it causes too much congestion, garbage, and a lot of other things for the residents of the city of New Brunswick.
Please, we talked about it in prior years with the tag system and all the rest of this, but I think a whole consensus was, none of them would have worked, this was the first real comprehensive sit-down with all the players at the table, and I don't think there was a dissenting, you know, police, and what we came up with, and I apologize if I'm not going to be now, or how recent my contribution today, but I'll be ready for introduction on the morning.
This is the last thing. Thank you. The last one, for police extra duty?
Yes, the PBA has approached us about amending the current ordinance, there's a rate structure in place for extra duty jobs through year 2010, they proposed breaking the rate structure into two distinctive groups, one for the state theater civic groups and other not-for-profit organizations, and then another rate structure for your regular road construction projects as well as some of the security assignments at some of the taverns and bars. What they are essentially proposing is three dollar increases per year, the rate currently is at, excuse me, is $52 an hour is the general, is the run-of-the-mill construction project rate, and $45 an hour is the rate for the state theater, they're proposing three dollar increases through year 2015. We've looked at that, we have placed on top of all of that over the years, an administrative fee that is rapidly increasing, at the moment it's $15 an hour, and we've also imposed a vehicle fee whenever one of our vehicles is used in our assignment, that's at $15 an hour too. Reviewing the hourly rates that the officer earns, we find that our employees are at the bottom of the range for Middlesex County municipalities. We clearly charge a larger administrative fee than any of our neighbors do, but quite frankly, that has been a relatively good thing for us, we bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars a year into the budget through, in the form of revenue, you know, when we collect that kind of administrative fee, so we're not looking to introduce it tonight, just wanted to advise you what the proposal is, I've reviewed it, the mayor's in the process of reviewing it, I think he just had a couple of extra questions, but I think we'll be in a position to present it to you for introduction in two weeks.
Make sure we get that comparison chart too, to what's another town?
I'll be happy to do that.
That's it? For discussion?
I believe so.
Councilmember Cook is absent, councilmember Egan?
Here.
Council vice president Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Barlatti?
Present.
Council president Racine?
Here. Please be advised that the notion requirements of the Public Meeting Act that apply with a satisfying annual notice, which gives sufficient notice to the time and place and conduct of all public meetings, the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick is filed with the city clerk, placed on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby city hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper, mainly the home news, tricky. Please read it, please.
For my allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for memory of the American flag, and the bustle lies in the conflicts in the Middle East. Thank you. Anybody have a cell phone, please pick on vibrate or turn it off. We have minutes from June 15, 2011. I make the motion, we tend to minutes?
Second.
Go on. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Council vice president Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenti?
Valenti.
I'm sorry, not Valenti.
No, Barlatti.
Yes.
Council president Racine? Hi. We have a public hearing tonight, El Tropicao, George's Road, I think Detective DeBonus is here, and I know that there are some people that want to speak on this, and there's a representative from the restaurant bar who will hear everyone, but we're going to start out with Detective DeBonus, and then people that want to speak, just raise your hand, you'll be recognized and you'll be afforded the opportunity to speak. Detective?
Yes, Detective Debonus, please. The Tropicana Bar from April 1st, 2010 to March 31st, 2011, had 48 calls for service, 17 of which were calls for disorderly persons or disorderly behavior, two for noise violations. At the last meeting, a question came up about the Tropicana Bar, and you asked me to review the most recent calls for service at the Tropicana Bar. For June into July, the first seven days of July, there were 15 calls for service, I believe there were, I know there were actually, four for disorderly persons or disturbances, and six for noise complaints. At least one of these noise complaints was a gross violation, where the officer claimed that he heard the noise and the thumping approximately 50 feet outside of the establishment. At least two to three of them were not sustained enough to issue a summons, actually, the first one of summons wasn't issued also. There has been, most recently, there have been employees of the establishment hanging out, I think it was June 17th or 19th, some security officers were hanging out in a residential area, not the parking lot, approximately 2:15 hanging out after hours congregating, and our officers asked them to move on. Also, there were some people drinking alcoholic beverages, I believe vodka, and they were issued a city ordinance in the parking lot, so the consumption of alcohol. Also, should be noted, because some of the neighbors did complain about the thumping and the noise, a city ordinance was issued to Norwood, I believe mechanical, they sell mechanical devices for vehicles there, apparently there's a worker there who was there later in the evening, hanging out and playing music loudly, he was issued a summons. I'm not saying that this could be some of the problem, we believe that this may have been going on for a little while, this particular employee, he was working there on weekends, fixing up his car and such. Some of the violations in that area for noise could have been from this particular individual, but we definitely have a problem with the Tropicana at this time.
Now, there's some residents from the area if you want to speak, now's the time. Anybody? Anybody?
Ray Johnson, I live in Sanford, I spoke the last meeting, and it was stated by Detective Debonus that they have been charging a cover charge up to a certain point, which indicated that it was possibly more of a club than a restaurant, and aside from the lack of charging that cover charge now, my impression is it's still being operated more of a club based upon when people arrive at the building and when they depart, rather than typical dinnertime game before 10 p.m.
When do they arrive?
Parking lot's quite full, more towards after 11:00 in the night, which I would consider dinner time for a restaurant, but given their track record, I think that they still need monitoring, because it's an ongoing problem for not just months, but over a year, so I can say that over the past week, it has been somewhat quieter in my experience, but
how long? Yes, what did you say?
I'd say, I think soon after the last meeting, I did hear the noise loud enough that I could hear it in my house, like that did not happen, I'd say over the past weekend and a half.
Anybody else who should speak on this, yes, name and address, please?
March Carver, to Comstock Street, I have not heard the noise from the Tropicana, but I have walked my dog down there, and I've gotten as far as the corner of Sanford and Jones, and been able to hear it in ways, and to be perfectly honest with you, there are a lot of unsavory characters hanging outside of this restaurant, you know, I was under the impression that it is a restaurant, and I don't think that, you know, this stuff should be going on for a restaurant, I don't know why you would need security officers for a restaurant, most restaurants I go to don't have security officers. You know, I am also a neighbor of Ray and Vincent Susan, and a member of the Second Ward Block Club, and we are very concerned about this. I believe we had also written a letter to the mayor and to the council about this, and you know.
That's what it's serious being.
Okay, you know, my concern is that the police go out there and they say it's unsubstantiated. Well, if somebody calls about the noise, you know, I had a real hard time saying it's unsubstantiated, you know, maybe the noise has calmed down a bit or whatever, but, you know, I also have a concern, I don't get any summonses, and, you know, I glide past there a lot too, and believe me, you know, at 1:00 in the morning, maybe coming home from a friend's house, and it sure doesn't feel like a restaurant to me.
It's a fact that they have issued some summonses recently.
Okay, well, that's good, I'm glad to hear that, but I'm wondering if you are going to remove their license, if there's some restrictions you could put on it, like it is a restaurant and not a club, because it sure doesn't appear to be a restaurant, and it sure doesn't sound like a restaurant, any restaurant that I've gone to anyway, so that's it for me, thanks.
Anybody else? If you're.
Vincent Racine, 1711, I will concur with my neighbors that we don't hear the noise in our house, but if you walk to the corner of Sanford and Nicollet Avenue, which is the block, a little more than block, but the restaurant, you can't hear music late at night, we've gone down there twice recently, once after the last council meeting, the Friday after, and actually, probably a week before the last council meeting, there was a hearing, and you can clearly hear music late at night after 10 o'clock on the street.
How long?
After 10 o'clock.
Until?
We don't stay up that late, so.
Does anyone?
No, I understand that, but, yeah, but there's been a couple times where we have gone out for the purpose of seeing if we could hear the music playing, and it looks like it's crowded, and it does look like an operating music club at 10 o'clock.
I will say this, the majority of the most recent noise complaints have been after 11, between 10:30 and midnight, so it is substantial. between 10:30 and midnight, so it is substantially late, and also after midnight. Also, I failed to mention that the parking lot, the 17th and 18th, the parking lot, at least on those particular days, was overflowed where it was full and parking in the residential area. I failed to mention that earlier.
Were they still charging the cover charge as a club?
To my knowledge, no.
Did the operation look like a club or like a restaurant operation?
Very difficult question, because the definition of a club is based on several different things, but in my opinion, it's operating towards a club.
Do they have a time when they stop serving meals?
Specifically, I don't know the answer to that question.
Anyone else? Mr. Rialdo, do you want to speak on behalf of the?
Yes. It's about the order here. Oh, it's been a while for the last few weeks to change the situation and all, it's just like that. We talk down with the noise, you know, we also have a meter, a decibel meter, to know how much noise going outside, and check with the ordinance, it said between 65 and 75 on the commercial, and we've been trying to keep it that way. The noise is, you know, previous day, it has been noise, we've been trying to cut all this thing down, changing. We put in a new dress code, try to screen the people that goes in there, also hired police officers, because the other weekend, a white car there, and most people drive away naturally to see the police car there. But other than that, we want to change, we're trying to change all those things to comply with the rules. There is not a club, this is a restaurant.
How late do you serve meals?
Bill?
How late do you serve meals?
Uh, till 9:00.
Have you had recorded music or live music?
Uh, recorded, on live.
Just recorded?
Yeah.
Any councilor or councilwoman questions?
Well, I just want to add that I did talk to some residents that live right behind the Tropicana, and someone, you know, they do recognize that there is noise, that they feel the vibration in their homes, but they, in the last few days, they have seen a reduce in the noise, so they are to recognize that they are, whatever is being moved by the person, they're trying to help out or ameliorate the noise, so according to the people that live right behind the restaurant that I spoke to. So, I don't know if that's something that the restaurant is working on, making any changes, anything that would make it...
They plan to relocate the speakers, a lot of the floor is gonna be up and make some changes.
Harry, it sounds like you got a bigger crowd after the dinner hour than you do before. How do you account for that? Is it the music, or what is it?
Do you play the...
Mr. Council President, we can add a little bit to this, I mean, some of the information Mr. Ala just spoke is new information to me about the situation there. We've already issued them a correction notice about operating a nightclub there, haven't issued a summons yet, because I understand we issued the correction notice and they stopped charging the cover charge. Sort of what Mr. DeBonus was referring to, the definition of what a nightclub is, in the zoning ordinance at least, it's a place where people go there primarily for the entertainment, and we use a cover charge as a way to indicate that people are going there primarily for entertainment, because if you're going to a restaurant for a meal, you don't usually pay a cover charge just to take a week, I don't know of any place where you pay a cover charge just to eat. If they're not serving meals after 9:00 P.M. and they're having entertainment and so forth there, I would call that a nightclub. That is not a permitted use in that neighborhood. I just want to make the council aware of that, that if they're gonna be open and doing business, it's only permitted as a restaurant for zoning purposes, and they can't operate it as a tavern, they can't operate it as a nightclub.
What course would actually, could you pay it?
Could issue them a summons to go to municipal court.
Mr. Patterson, if that's the case, and food is stopped at 9:00, then if we decide to put conditions on it, we're kind of putting conditions on something that shouldn't be there to begin with, is that correct?
No, I don't think you can say there can't be any music there after 9:00, but as Mr. Patterson says, it looks like the primary purpose is the music as opposed to the food, or what I, yes, you got a problem.
Mr. Patterson, I was just having to say, a restaurant is allowed to have, you know, background entertainment for, whether it's recorded music, or strolling violin, or, you know, some for entertainment of the diners who are eating there. Frankly, if their kitchen's open, they're serving meals like a restaurant, that's a restaurant, they could still have the music there and so forth, they can't charge a cover, at least under our interpretation of it, shouldn't be charging a cover to come in there, but they can't have entertainment, but it's ancillary to the primary purpose of what they're open for, which is serving meals.
Mr. Patterson, how can we work to do any conditions on it to make sure that it stays a restaurant usage and not a, one second, a bar slash club? I mean, I understand we've put conditions before based on using it, but if we do that now, are they still in violation of...
Well, I think what you might do is put a restriction on the, we already had a restriction on a noise level, it's not Mr. Rialdo, but they're trying to address that. When you put a restriction on the hours and revisit that, as you are in the other matter, come back in sixteen days or ninety days and see what's going on, see if anything else is wrong, because I don't think you want to just let it go until next year.
No, I don't. But my one concern, even putting it temporary, is, yes, a lot of effort will be made to knock the sound down or whatever for those days, and then once it's up, then you, you know, because I'm not convinced that the effort the last week where less sound is because, not so much because of what they're trying to, because of hearing, it's not.
Also, couldn't be people away for summer, July, that's all.
I'm sorry, that's a part of it. Comment question?
I just have a question, just a second. So, the restaurant license right there is because of the zoning, because downtown, you know, they will have to change, is there zoning in that area that doesn't allow to have music in that area? Because I'm thinking, not because it's a restaurant, you shouldn't have music, because I know downtown, there's places, restaurants that you have a band, I can even dance, because I have been to some of those, so, so I'm trying to think it's just in that area, the zoning doesn't allow to have...
There are three different types of establishments, sort of like, restaurants, taverns, and nightclubs. A restaurant is defined as a place that's primarily serving meals and so forth. Tavern is a place that's primarily serving alcoholic drinks and so forth, you know, it's a bar. And nightclub is a place where people are primarily going there for entertainment. Tropicana is in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone, restaurants are a permitted use there. Restaurant can have entertainment, but it has to be ancillary to the primary purpose of serving meals. If you have a jukebox in the background, if you have a band there, just to provide some atmosphere, that's, that's fine. But if people are primarily going there for the entertainment purpose of going there because there are, you know, big name bands, or dance contests, or something like that, then I would say that's operating as a club. That's, it's not specifically stated like that in the ordinance, that's something that if there was a summons issued, we'd have to go to court, and they could challenge our interpretation, we could challenge their interpretation of how they're operating, and that's what the court decided.
What is the option, see?
That, you'd have to ask Mr. Quiley Otter or Mr. Prue.
Harry, it's 130, it's 135, I think. Someone around there? Excuse me, sir? Yeah, also, according to Mr. Patterson, there's a certificate of occupancy, the building department is for a restaurant, if they're using the music as a nightclub, if they don't meet the codes, what a nightclub is, you know, and they're in violation, and they can shut down for that.
I understand they are presently naming a lot of the police officers on a voluntary basis. Mr. Rialdo?
That is correct.
I said they were.
How many, and on what nights?
One officer, Saturday night and Sunday evening, Sunday night.
What time to what time?
10:00 to 2:00 a.m., approximately, you can look at before 2:00 a.m., in excess of 100 occupants exiting at one given time.
To me, that goes the argument that it's a club.
Listen, it sounds to me like this place is operating as a nightclub. I kind of agree with the lady who spoke before, that I don't know many restaurants that after 10:00 are thriving more than they were during the dinner hour. So, if it, you know, acts like a horse, looks like a horse, whatever that saying is, it seems to me like we need to either have this establishment run as a restaurant, if they do not, then we have to issue them summonses, and then we have to place restrictions on them. If that means hourly type of restrictions, then that's what we need to do, because that, like Mr. Patterson said, that's a C1 neighborhood, it's not permissible, not permissible. Let me say that one more time, not permissible for a nightclub or a tavern. So, it's pretty simple to me that either this place starts operating as a restaurant, or we have to place tougher restrictions. Nothing against the police or extra work duty, but that doesn't seem to be working for this, for this establishment, because we still have problems here. And so, it's either one, or we have to either place hourly restrictions on what time this restaurant can be open till, so we can stop this, so the residents there don't have to experience this.
Or what time the music stops.
Or what time the music stops. But it seems to me that this is something that needs to be done, because it seems to me that it's operating as a nightclub.
My fellow councilmembers, are you in favor of approving the liquor license application with conditions, specifically police, required for police and time, stopping music at 11:00, 12:00, something, excuse me?
At some time.
At some time. Yes.
Restrictions, yes. I still have questions, because I'm not, you know, and I'm not saying that there's no need to, maybe it's my understanding, because there's other establishments here, but maybe they're not, like a block or two blocks down, so maybe that's, it's not a C1 in that area, maybe this is, you know, this is a C1. So, I don't get it, in terms of the ordinance, so the restaurant could apply for whatever it is that they're, you know, in order to have, maybe because we have music, you know, it's something, it's a cultural thing that we have music in restaurants, you know, that's part of our culture, maybe that's why it's having, it's a hard time for me to understand it, and I do understand and believe that, I live very close to your area where this place is set, and I'm just trying to see if there's a way that everybody could be a little bit, you know, the residents behind, because I know that you don't want to leave with hearing that, all that noise in the area, and like I said, I know people that live right behind it, and they have to suffer that, with that noise every night, right behind it, and I'm willing to work, you know, with the music again. If the license doesn't, you know, I am not gonna say that they are, I don't dare to say that they're operating as a nightclub, because I don't know, that's not my, you know, I'm not an expert on that. But I do believe that there should be some restrictions with the music. I think 11:00 is too early for me.
I have no problem, midnight.
Yeah, midnight or 1:00.
I have no problem with that.
Because I think that at 11:00 it's like, then why have the police there until 2:30?
Mr. Debonus, what are the other hour restrictions on second ward, either taverns or restaurants?
The, uh, Melton DeGale, which is approximately four to six blocks away, I believe they have an officer Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evening from 10:00.
Where's it supposed to be?
Excuse me?
The music.
Music hours.
My understanding, there's no music restrictions right now as we speak, because we're gonna rehear that in September.
They did have.
They did have them, I believe it was at one time midnight on Sunday night, 1:00 a.m. Saturday night, and 1:00 a.m. Friday night, and I think then we pushed back Sunday night to a later time.
What do you, or could they compare the music at the El Tropicana with the de bonus?
The calls for service, the type of violations, and the type of quality of life issues within the neighborhood are similar. Yes.
I mean, if I had to put a restriction of midnight for the, the sensational music, what day? Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or just some?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Marge Curver again, I'm just having a difficult time understanding if it's zone C1, which means a restaurant, okay?
I understand that.
Okay, can I just finish? All right, a restaurant, and they serve food till 9:00, so I don't quite understand how you can extend them till like 10:00 or 11:00 if they're not serving food, and they're a restaurant.
They have to eat the food, Mr. Rialdo, they have to serve it.
We don't have that.
Okay, serve by 9:00, okay, so you're gonna let them go till 10:00 or 11:00.
Do you know that they're not serving food at 9:00?
I believe he said that.
He said, that's definite they're not serving food, they're not a restaurant.
What does gentlemen say? You know, and, you know, again, I don't see too many restaurants that have police boxes.
I understand, that was my question earlier, if they're not operating as a restaurant. There shouldn't be, shouldn't you be talking restrictions, because except, it's the practice of the background, you know, the practice, because as Mr. Patterson says, these are the only, if you need someone, you have to go there, someone's got to file a complaint, and so, I think they want to, because they stole some of that and headed off by reasonable restrictions, not over restrictions, reasonable restrictions. And if they, and if they go beyond what the restrictions are, then there's gotta be enforcement action by either zoning or somebody else, zoning or police. Yes, ma'am?
Susan Payton, 1711, I just want you to keep in mind what the officer reported, about 100 people leaving the establishment between 1:00 and 2:00 a.m., which food hasn't been served since 9:00 in the morning, so it's not only that music, excuse me, not that, it's not only the music, you know, you have 100 people that have been there for some other reason than having food, leaving, you know, going into our neighborhood and, you know, probably making things a lot more different, difficult for the police department.
You sound like a bad comment with this whole thing, because it's not a club, and you shouldn't be discussing loud music at a restaurant. I agree, but it's not. I mean, it's up to me, I put...
Yeah, let me say this about that, you know, we were talking about, I think, a restaurant with a Spanish, and traditionally, there is a loud music and it's really loud in a, in a Spanish society, and I think you gotta think that it will count, you want to satisfy the needs, you also want to recognize that this is legitimate, because this may operate as far as you know, as often.
But it's not being operated legitimately, that's my point.
Does that music have to be natural?
They can have music that, as Mr. Patterson said, that is, adds to the atmosphere, not as a dance floor, for instance, an DJ.
Let me ask Mr. Rialdo one other thing. Harry, you got temporary permit from ABC?
Yes, we have.
You could see that if you're, well, actually, you should put a police restriction in there if you put hours restrictions, or if you really want to hustle the poor, so that, bring back here, and in the meantime, decide individually, maybe collectively, what you want to do. Do you ever really have anyone quite like this?
I know. I would, in my opinion, I would prefer to do it on a twice, and get some, talk about it, because my feelings on it are, yes, different, as I agree, a lot with residents, because I don't think it's a, it's not operating as a restaurant, you know, they're serving food, it's totally for my, my opinion.
But let me say this, and I think it's a good idea to technically look at it, but we don't require restaurants to shut down at that. And if they come back and say, we're gonna serve meals, or light meals or something till 10:30, and I know places that do that, where you can go full meal at one certain hour a day, and get a hamburger or something like that, and I'm not inviting more problems, but I mean, we've got to take that all into account.
I know, let's try to look at it a little bit more.
But something like, something like, excuse me, something like that would begin to address Susan's concern of, nobody's had anything to eat since 9:00, and they're leaving between 1:00 and 2:00, and, you know, that, that's a concern for me, and, you know, I'm lightweight when it comes to both food and alcohol consumption, but if I have eaten since 9:00 and I've been drinking till 1:00, I'm kind of wobbly.
Well, do you want to, you could ask Mr. Iella whether they're prepared to put in, say, a light menu between 9:00 and 10:30. That may be going in the opposite direction of where you want to go, I don't know.
Do the fellow council members wish to?
I wish to vote tonight, I think what we should do is do what Council President Sead said, and we should revisit this on the 20th, where we want a little more information, in a little more detail.
They've got temporary ABC permit to operate, so we're not shutting them down. And we're not taking any...
Can we make, can we make temporary restrictions? I would like to make a temporary restriction that they can't play the music after 12:00 AM for now. See how that works until the 20th. And I think it still operate, like they're operating, but I would like to put a temporary restriction for the midnight, just until the 20th. I mean, I don't think, I don't think we should not do nothing, and let them keep going through in the morning. So I think that...
For a second, I like?
Second.
Voting on a menu to...
No, we're going to...
Technical condition, depending the...
But I don't think we should not do anything.
No, I agree with him.
I just want to be clear, putting the music until midnight, and the police will be adding that too, right?
The police is still involved with the extra work.
They're doing that voluntarily.
They're doing it voluntarily.
Yes, they're doing that voluntarily.
Would you continue to do that voluntarily without any conditions, Mr. Iella?
What?
Would you continue to have the police there without any formal conditions?
Yeah, we'll pretend to that.
Okay. No, that was also involved, I just want to leave it like it was, to place a restriction on the music till midnight, until the 20th, when we revisit the matter again.
So we had a motion, the second, you want to follow? Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye. So that's what we're going to do, I do have to look at this myself more. It's hard to figure this out.
Maybe this game, just something which probably makes some sense, which we get a commitment from the establishment, they keep a tab, I guess, on the number of people in there, make that information available to the officer, or to investigating officer, whichever officer, most things would be a good way to handle it.
So what you're saying is from now till the 20th, you would like the officer to keep a tab, or the establishment to let the officer see about how many people are at the establishment? At a certain time, or?
Well, I would say half to 9:00.
I'm, that's fine. That's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Ray Johnson again. It's not just Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. This is probably a five-day a week where I've heard noise played a lot.
All day of operation, the music should be about 12:00.
Okay, do we need to amend the thing that we just...
I'm going to have to...
Okay, I'd like to amend my resolution, and the new resolution, I can say that for seven days a week, they can only have music until midnight. I would also like in the resolution to say that we'd like to keep a head count, if I'm saying that correct, on patrons at the establishment from 9:00 to 1:00, or whatever it is. Would that pose a hardship to you, sir, Mr. Iella?
I guess what.
Oh, you can't go over 138 anyway.
Right.
So if it's 138, for that, honestly, that other 9:00 on, and we're compliant, the council is going to know that that's how many people in there.
We're just trying to get a record of how many people are in your establishment at a certain time. And we just, you know, the officer there, you and the officer, we can get, keep, sometimes a head count.
I can confirm a head count, I have officer.
That would be great.
I can do it seven days.
Yes, motion.
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all for participating in here.
Can I just make a suggestion to the council? Like, they have a website, you might want to visit their website and see their advertisements.
Yeah, you're all, obviously free to come back on the twenty, when you get guys.
All right. We move on to ordinances on second reading, ODA 061101. An ordinance to amend and supplement, revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicle and traffic, Chapter 10 dot 12, traffic control regulations, Section 10 dot 12 dot 020, one-way streets, Bergen Court to Jennings Court, Chapter 10 dot 16, stop and stand or parking, Section 10 dot 16 dot 020, parking prohibited on certain streets, no parking west side of Bergen Court to Jennings Court. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance?
Move the ordinance. Roll call. Councilmember Cook is absent. Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
ODA 061102 has been held. We have to move this to 20th, for public...
We have to give the motion to this under...
So move?
Second, roll call. Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
We have ordinances on first reading, ODA 071101, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 12 dot 04, sidewalk construction repair maintenance.
I move the ordinance setting down July 20th, 5:30 PM, same as the other.
Second, roll call. Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
ODA 071102, an ordinance to vacate Jones Street and portions of Church Street of the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance to be set down for the 20th of July at 5:30 PM.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
We have resolutions, ODA 071101, and ODA 07113726 has been pulled. Does anybody wish to comment on any of these resolutions?
I have a question on resolution 35. What is it for? The special one, the application, execution, and acceptance of crimes, report other remedies of family, use habits.
The other burn?
Yes.
Captain Milligan? I know it's an annual grant, the other burn grant?
Yes.
What is it for?
There's several of them, this one, if you take third off, off of my head, I believe we're trying to pick up a patrol vehicle. There may be some other things in it, I think a laptop computer, but I'm not sure exactly.
All right. I'll look through this. Anyone else wish to comment on any of the resolutions?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
Any correspondence, Mr. Corr?
Yes, Mr. Council President.
Item number one, copy of letters from Lambin Engineering regarding receptor evaluation at Rutgers University. Number two, letter from Division of Solid Waste Management regarding solid waste plan amendment, application American Recycling Services. Number three, copy of county resolution regarding continuation of municipal alliance activities program. Number four, copy of county resolution regarding support, the enactment of Assembly Bill A3852 and Senate Bill S2243. Number five, letter from the Veterans Alliance, Raritan Valley, regarding Veterans Day Parade. Number six, copy of letter from DEP regarding unrestricted use, no further action letter, and covenant not to sue regarding Block 65, 83 Central Avenue. Number seven, letter from Greater Brunswick Charter School regarding the Charter School, 429 Joyce Kilmer Avenue, final engineering inspection. Number eight, letter from JJS Professional LLC regarding an adult health care, health center, Albert Katz at 50 Charles Street, final site inspection. Number nine, notes to neighboring landowners from Rutgers University regarding a property at the Borough of Holland Park and Township of Edison. Number 10, public notice from New Jersey Water Supply Authority regarding construction of a water quality monitoring station at Delaware and Raritan Canal at Landy Lane in the city of New Brunswick. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action. Thank you. Before we get into the public portion, I want to congratulate David Levins, I know you're here tonight, for your appointment to the Director of Social Services. Look forward to working with you and seeing you at our meetings. Congratulations. Any council members? Hey, you stand up, please, so we know who you are. Any council members wish to address the ordinance? Anyone from the audience wish to address council?
I would.
What's? Down. Yeah, yeah, first. Name that, please.
Fred Howell of 21 Boyd's Road. I have a few things to mention on general observations of the city of New Brunswick. During the Memorial Day Parade, the city of New Brunswick was totally absent as far as the fire department was concerned. Holland Park had like nine vehicles there, plus the rescue squad, and everybody else was, from that squad, was walking. I mean, it was an absolute disgrace that not, nobody from the city of New Brunswick Fire Department were involved in the parade. And the police did the best they could, but again, there was a lack of communication on the route of the parade. I went to the fire department, and I asked them, how come they weren't in the parade? And they said, because we weren't asked, we weren't told, we didn't share a lot. This goes back to the director. Mr. Rollins, goes back to my, from the year 2006.
Actually, it's not run by the city, it's not, we don't run the parade, it's run by the Veterans Alliance of Raritan Valley. They're the ones that arranged the parade, they hold the parade, because I don't know if they reached out to the fire department, but I have to look at, because if they were, it confuses one thing, if they didn't. But it's something, and I don't disagree with you about the parade either, so, you know, I'm not going to put the blame on the director, I don't even want to, if you have other issues with him, but let's find out why first.
Hey, that's the fireman, nobody...
That's the fireman, I don't know if the invitation was sent out by the Raritan Valley Veterans Alliance either. And I don't know that, yes or no. I need to find that out before I'm going to start placing blame on anybody.
You know, I think, so I don't have to come back, I'll still say... You have to be a little bit better on who you choose to run these organizations. Because I've gone to two other events, which aren't run by affirmative action, their leaders, and I find them fantastically run. I happen to be...
I don't understand, I don't understand that comment.
The comment is that we may have an ineffective, we don't know how Mr. Rollins got his job, but I know for sure that he's not doing it right. Because when my place burnt down, he wasn't there, and there are 14 people under him who are not regular firemen, there are some officers, and not one of them was scheduled to be working on that day. Now, how could you run the fire department when no leader is scheduled to be on duty? And the place burns to the ground in four hours? So we'll still stay with the same comments. And if anybody wants to challenge me on it, or sue me on it, I'm all ready. Okay. The second, those other events that were so well-run, and these people don't get, the following two people, as far as I know, don't get paid overtime to be there or do anything, is that the city of New Brunswick, with the county, and maybe the state, but more so directed by Mr. Lockton, which I later read and found out, we had a great park built, Boyd Park. And I would think one tenth, or maybe one hundredth of the city knows how great that place is.
He probably worked on that.
And he threw an affair where we now have the docks there, which was last week, two weeks ago, and it was a great outing. And he has to have a lot of caduce where bringing that event around, because he didn't start on that last year, he must have started on it three, four years ago, and it came to fruition, and it's a great, great place. Limited amount of people showed up, but it was still a great event. The second thing on that same park...
Just so you know, Boyd Park on September 11th, on Sunday, is going to be starting on, the market dates, if you were...
Okay.
Let me make a point, while it's true I spent a lot of time on the highway park project, I had very little to do with that event before the New Brunswick land project.
By the county?
It was more of a county function with a, you know, a little bit of city input.
But he still showed up, he did, he still showed up, and he always was there. The other thing is another fellow who probably is in one of these meetings, but it seems to work like anything, and probably is mid-range as far as salary, and I try to equate public salary to private salary, and he probably is underpaid, is Mr. Mike Blackwell, ran another fantastic affair. Unbelievably, and he was out in the middle of the street, directing traffic on...
So the fireworks, the flood?
The fireworks and a band concert, there were two things going on simultaneously. He handled them well, the police department handled it unbelievably well. The traffic was moved, there was not one thing that wasn't, it was an orchestrated event that was, everybody should have been black holeing out how that happened, since there were a lot of people walking and driving to that event. And you have, you're proud to be in these last two of New Brunswick residents and to participate in it. In the same event, in the same venue though, with the police department, when can we stop all of this double-dipping and triple-dipping and start to have stronger union contracts for appointments to jobs? Because I, my neighbor is Mr. Caputo, and he's a great person, and he's athletically fit, and there's no one better to be the director. But I read an article where you guys had to go out and borrow $300,000 to pay him, or some version of paying him. What, why, if he was hired, and somebody who's, same council people, have been there all this time, over all these years, you never figured out that maybe you were overpaying this guy? Or many guys in his level? Because someday, after 20 years, they're going to want a lot of money. And I think we have to knock this down on how much retirement, they either use it or lose it. Because they only work 40 hours, and it's not like they're running a corporation. I run a corporation, and I'm telling you that you could lose it, and people work more than 40 hours, and they don't get paid overtime when they're executives. The police and firemen have no skin in the game, they're only employees.
The state law, Mr. Lockton, I think, well, we have changed it too, that the vacation times have been capped.
Sick time, sick time.
But that's on vacation time, that's not on sick times have been capped, but vacation is...
Vacation is still a benefit, I believe it's protected by federal labor law, and you do not lose it if you don't use it.
So it can pile up still?
It can.
Is that something that the municipality has between us and the PDA, or is that, is this a state? It's my understanding that the firemen don't have that, and the cops do.
Firemen in their contract are required to use vacation in the year of the year. That is not the case in the PDA contract.
And when is the PDA contract set?
2013, I believe.
And for 21 years, though, we, well, let me try and touch on a couple of things.
The city did not have to borrow money to compensate Mr. Caputo for accumulated sick and vacation time. He had accumulated, I want to argue, a fair amount of money, and the city is paying it over six years by agreement, and he did not have to borrow money to do that.
So if you had to raise taxes, what's the difference if you had to borrow with Mr. Lockton?
Let Mr. Lockton...
I was just responding to the point that you made, that we had to borrow money for, we did not.
Well, you had to raise taxes and...
We're out of order for it. Yes, we have to pay for it.
There was, for 21 years, employees have been capped at a... There was, for twenty-one years, employees have been capped at an accumulation of $15,000 for sick time. Anyone hired after 1990, as it relates to police and fire, and I think anyone after 1991 on the blue collar management side has been capped at an accumulation of $15,000. So, we have done things to try and limit this. Yes, you're seeing some people retire now who've had thirty years of service, and some of their numbers are huge, and none of us are thrilled with that, but we, I think we've made, I'd say we're twenty years ahead of the state in terms of the curve on trying to cap sick time accumulations. We put these in contracts in 1990.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I have a couple more questions. So, the contract that we got the vacations between the city of New Brunswick and the PDA, or is this, is this something that's with the state? Is that the city that gives them that right to accumulate vacation time?
We don't make them use it in the year that it's earned, and I don't know of any labor law that allows us to then just wipe it clean.
What was, what was the law that allowed you to wipe, to cap the sick time?
They don't cap it, they make them use.
They capped the sick time at $15,000, you said.
They also make them use.
So, at one time, the sick time is not capped, then they capped it. So, if the vacation time is not capped, and somebody wanted to cap it, why, why, what's, I'm just asking, what's the difference between?
I don't follow the question. The imposition of the $15,000 cap was by negotiation.
So, could we impose some sort of regulatory mechanism on the use of vacation time through negotiation the next time we're talking to the police officers? I guess that's what.
Exactly.
I don't know that you couldn't do that.
Okay. Ask until 2013.
I have two other matters. A month ago, or a couple months ago, probably by my suggestion, because on the Jersey Avenue handicap, Handi Street project, that started back in 2002, where the city legally stole my property, and it was the only piece of property that was sitting there for four years before I came down and complained about it, then they, they made, or the suggestion was to Mr. Morris, "Maybe you better build something else." So, he built a bank and a strip mall. The bank, to this day, is still empty, and the strip mall, up until two months ago, only had three tenants for that four-year period. And when I then came down to bring it again to their attention, that you just took my property, and Walgreens was able to have the best piece of property in the city of New Jersey, city of New Brunswick, and the state of New Jersey, and they paid me for it, they came up with the solution that because I was complaining that my other properties in the city of New Brunswick were not being able to be sold, because they were all concentrated in one area up on Jersey Avenue, the redevelopment came up with the cute idea of again trying to appease Mr. Morris by cutting off part of the original deal, which was to develop from Handy Street to the end of Sanford Street. And the reason that they couldn't go forward, because in this same eight-year period of time, we, and I won't get into the "we's," but I was instrumental to grow and learn more about this violation of eminent domain, and we put lots of pressure on to try to get the rules changed. It didn't get changed directly, greatly, but other methods were used to try to damper the people in New Brunswick who were helping these developers legally steal property, and some of them paid dearly, one paid dearly with his life, and the other person went to jail, because it isn't, we, where we can't win one way, it's just like being in law enforcement, just like Alan Pone didn't go to jail for racketeering. Other people went and got involved for other reasons with other agencies. And we're not giving up on the fact that now, you didn't notify me, probably the only person that has any skin in the game on that whole five-block area, that you were gonna change it. Why wouldn't you send me a letter, since I have property in the area, that we are taking the remainder of the property out of the redevelopment zone? The reason he couldn't continue on with that project, because he wouldn't have been able to get the last block that I had, because the eminent domain wouldn't let him take it, because of the type of information that was used to get the original eminent domain project. So, I'm going to still be challenging that project legally, and the people that are involved in passing these rules, but out, why wouldn't you?
I have no idea what I'm gonna reply.
Well, and then the whole fact that the council voted on it, and the planning board voted on, the cherry picking of this whole project, the last block is the worst, and my property's not for sale.
Who's got that?
And the last project that's going on in the city of New Brunswick, that has to be the biggest white-collar ripoff of money that has ever been done in the city of New Brunswick. The first time on Livingston Avenue that they did the wheelchair ramps in, not even one-third of the corners needed to be done.
That's somewhere in county, and I know they were redone because of regulation on the level of the.
Right, I stopped and asked. I stopped and asked, but the ones in front of the school, in the last three months, are being done three times. This is the third time they're being ripped up, and they're pouring concrete. Now, we have, when I'm building, I have inspectors there stopping almost every one of my projects. We have a guy, I tried to put up my sidewalks in, 200 running feet on Bethany Street in front of one of my businesses, and I only wanted to repair ten feet of the 200. And the city told me, "No, if you touch the ten feet, we want you to put 200 feet of sidewalk in." So, I didn't do it, naturally, because where am I gonna get that type of money? I get no grants or nothing like that. So, then I'm saying, "That inspector came to my place and gives me all these rules, and we have an inspector checking if other sidewalks have been dug up. Where was he? When this, it happened in our town. You can't, you might say it's a county, but it's our city. And no sidewalks on Livingston Avenue are, are not under his jurisdiction to be standing there when the cement's being poured."
The boards are 900 miles, and they were checked by the state, actually. Through the DCA. They were making sure they fit the code, and then after the fourth county, every year.
And who, since you know that part, or are you aware, who paid for it?
I don't know, I'm just gonna tell you county in a year or two.
But who paid for it? Do you know that?
County wasn't paying for it. I'm not sure, the family, or the grandfather, or, not the city, I think, not the city.
Thank you very much, but I'll go to that meeting next, and see if we can get somebody fired, why they weren't there. Because in any other business, or any other business, type of project, there has to be somebody checking this stuff. And we don't even know, the rain came over this past weekend, and if you go up on Livingston Avenue again, what they poured, and you can relate this to the wintertime, there was gullies of water there on the new stuff that they poured. So, that means in the winter, it's gonna be ice right in front of the wheelchair ramps. It's just something to check.
All right. Anybody else? Larry Blatterfine, I'm here next, please.
Thank you, I'm Larry Blatterfine, I own The Night Club on Eastern Avenue, and I've been there since 1981. I'm here because last week, I convinced a lawsuit against Mayor Cahill in the city of New Brunswick, because I believe my First Amendment rights are being violated. The lawsuit concerns the city's attempts to frustrate my ability to open a new sports bar and restaurant at the former Bennigan site, at the intersections of Roots 1 and 18. I want to name the sports bar Buck Fostings Roadhouse. I selected this name because it really celebrates a hundred, a century-old rivalry between New York and Boston sports teams. Although I will let the lawsuit speak for itself, in a meeting with the mayor, he expressed his dislike and disdain for the name Buck Fostings. Now, bear in mind that this isn't just about Larry Blatterfine or my First Amendment rights. This issue is about bringing more and good jobs to the area without having arbitrary government interference get in the way of our economic development. I'm not looking for subsidies from you or from my neighbors. I am simply asking that the city government get out of my way and stop interfering with my efforts to start and grow a new business in which I intend to employ about seventy-five people. In November of '09, I signed a contract with the owners of the shredded Bennigan's property. And since that time, the red tape I've had to deal with has cost me substantial money and repeatedly delayed the opening of this restaurant. The most recent example is the city's action, or inaction, in delaying my liquor license transfer. April 4th of this year, I filed an application to transfer a liquor license from a defunct business with the intention of moving it to my new site. The process of acquiring this liquor license transfer really should have taken only a few weeks. As of today, the license transfer process is stalled. My numerous phone calls, emails, and letters to inquire what else I could supply to move the process along have received no response. I'm left to conclude that the license transfer process has been deliberately halted because the mayor's expressed dislike of the name. No other negative comments have been made to me by any other city agent regarding this project. Tonight's meeting is occurring over thirteen weeks after the filing of the application on April 4th. There's no excuse for this delay, which is unjustified and costly to my business and to those people I wish to employ. I should note that the city claims that I need to complete a police background check, but the timing on this is absurd. I've held a liquor license in this town for thirty years, I had a second one back years ago, neither of these have had any violations in thirty years, and in fact, the current one was just renewed, well, two weeks ago, or whenever the last council meeting was, I assume. Thirteen weeks is really unnecessary, and I think everybody in the city would recognize that. Second, the city claims that it cannot allow me to receive the license because it requires a tax clearance letter from the seller. Now, I've done everything I can do in this regard. I signed the application in a timely manner, it was sent off to the state. If the state has a problem with the seller, then let the state take it up with the seller. Regardless, I've been advised that this council, if it saw it fit to do so, could pass a resolution escrowing those funds, and let the license transfer go through. You know, not to do so continues to place a devastating financial burden on this project, my family, my investors, me, everybody involved. Because of the city's unjustified delay, I have suffered substantial financial damages that currently exceed $100,000, and increase by over $10,000 each week it drags on, and that money really could have been better spent adding to the economic vitality of this city by letting me get this project going. Instead, the inaction of the city and interfering with my ability to create jobs and economic vitality, I believe that New Brunswick deserves better, and I hope you agree with this. A lot of people have been affected by this. The seller of the liquor license is waiting, the seller of the property's been waiting for me for over two years to get this thing going. There are people who are waiting to be employed, my family's waiting to be employed, my investors have considerable money tied up in this project. I want you to hear from somebody, I brought my daughter along, she's gonna be involved in this project. So, you have a little background on Katie? She graduated from Douglas College Phi Beta Kappa. She went to University of Tampa, where she received her MBA, and during that time, she interned at Universal Studios, where she ran three restaurants. And during that, when she finished her graduation, she was offered a management position with Universal. So, if you would indulge Katie, I'd appreciate it.
Katie Sorrentino. Okay, I'm Katie Sorrentino, my father is Larry Blatterfine, and I want to add my voice to the situation that's confronting my family and the business that we want to open within this community. When I graduated from business school in 2009, my husband Jeff and I moved back to New Jersey with the expectation that we would be helping my father open a new business, and it was a really exciting opportunity for us. Jeff had just completed his deployment in Iraq, and this was his second tour in the Middle East. He's an Army Ranger, and he remains active in New Jersey's National Guard. He also received an economics degree from Rutgers. And while his employment ended in January, he did not receive any unemployment. When we returned here in 2009, we bought a home in Somerset, and the expectation was that we would begin a family. For the past few years, we've had to resort to doing contract work and to contemporary jobs as we wait for the Buck Fostings project to begin. After my internship and my graduation from UT, I was offered a management position at Universal, as my dad mentioned, and I turned it down in hopes of bringing.
If you can get to the point of the time, I don't need the light history.
I think the point, if I may, is just that I want the council to be aware that a lot of people are being affected by this, and it's innate, and it's all worked, well, listen, I've been forced to bring legal action because I cannot understand why this has taken so long. So, really just wanted to, for anybody who might not have been aware, bring that to light, and the fact that we're seeking compensation. So, you know, I would like to think that we could.
Your daughter's light history has to do with Fostings.
Well, I'm trying to present the fact that we are upstanding citizens, we are the type of people that New Brunswick should want to capture here and keep here, and basically the message that's been given to young people is, "Don't work here, don't try to find your fortune here, because it's not here." That's, that's it.
Can I ask you, just in case we're trying to answer, what's going on? I appreciate your position as well, Mr. Hamilton.
Just so the council is aware, this matter cannot proceed to transfer until there is a tax clearance letter. The Blatterfines lawyers know that, they were told that by the state. We're not holding a tax clearance letter, we don't issue a tax clearance letter. It hasn't been issued yet, partners aren't on your agenda, until there's a tax clearance letter, so that you're on your agenda. I'm gonna say it now.
Exactly.
I want to be aware.
Yes.
And the extent of this problem for the prior owner, it's gotta be worked out between the proposed transferee and the prior owner, and maybe there's gonna be an escrow there, it's not something that we set up, it's not something we enjoy.
Well, with that, I'm not gonna comment, obviously, because it isn't a litigation.
Yeah, but thank you for it.
Thank you for being able to talk.
Does anybody else have any? Yes, or in the back?
21 North Edison Road of New Brunswick. I just want to make a quick comment, that in 2011, we live in a multicultural society right now, and I've been coming to this meeting for a long time, and I've never, ever heard a discussion that turned from the higher ideals of remembering people who served for this country on Memorial Day, be denigrated, to a discussion of affirmative action. And to denigrate every single person in this room, if you're black, Latino, gay, straight, handicapped, or whatever, I have never heard anybody's qualifications questioned like that, and that's an affront to every single person in this room. And I don't know how we can go through something like that without it being rebuked and discussed at some other point. Because I was disgusted at what I heard tonight, having somebody's qualifications, no matter who they are, challenged because of the color of their skin or what their background is. And I just want to say that I'm personally offended by that, and everybody else in this room should be personally offended by that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Charles, round to Harvey Street, New Brunswick. Mr. Dominus, to say the least, but can you tell me what the ordinance in first reading that was passed, 1101, with that involved? That's the amendment of the sidewalk construction repair amendments.
Yes, the prohibition on the basing the size of, you know, you put a lot of money into the sidewalk, that counts.
George Streeter.
Well, but that's what it's aimed at.
There's nothing else?
No, it's strong. I think if you look at the language, you'll probably find that a problem.
The other two, two minor things. Some months ago, Mr. Cradville brought to the attention of the council that the September meetings were at 5:30, and the council basically concurd they would change it to 6:30. I don't think that's been done, hasn't been done, or did I miss it?
The council's about to say it, I'll tell you. See, I've never been involved about that.
Can you check into that, and, you know, I think the council's uniformly in favor of this. The other thing is just to report something, I'm not sure who to go to, so I'm coming to you, and that is that the Kasuth Park water fountain apparently has never been turned on. It leaks from the piping underneath it. The park is very heavily used by a lot of children, schoolchildren. Park is very heavily used by a lot of children, schoolchildren. And also, when they installed the fountain several years ago, they changed it, they put in a dish that has no drain. So, what happens is when the fountain is operating, the water pools into that dish, and people walking their dogs have the dogs drink from the fountain dish, and then people, kids come along and drink from the fountain, you know, stick it, and it's patently unhealthy. And so, hopefully that can be turned on before too long.
Yes.
I don't know whether it's Department of Parks, Division of Parks, or the Public Works, or-
Division of Parks.
Okay, but usually it's Division of Public Works that turns it on physically. I'm going to the water department, I'm sure Kenny Burks-
Kenny's with the parks.
He's with parks?
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
My lawyer. Okay, that's it. Anybody else? Seen a movie, made a book, moved here?
Second.
Local. Councilmember Eadie? Yes. Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Gori?
I.
Council president will see.
I.